The call of me to order, this is the meeting of the Hampton Boris Selectmen, the Townhouse Auditorium, March fourteenth, twenty twenty-two, being held at five thirty P M. This meeting is being conducted in person and remotely using video conferencing technology as approved by the Governor in April twenty twenty-two to July fifteen, twenty twenty-two. Please stand for the flag. What is this? The United States of America, and it is one nation, under God, indivisible, infinite, and just as strong. Do you see me in the back?
Yeah, yeah.
Is anyone recording the meeting other than us? No one, no one seen, I see no one. Excuse me?
Are we both not signed on these?
Oh, we're gonna find out on Google. All right. Minutes for January thirty-first, twenty twenty-two.
Yeah, make a motion to approve January thirty-first, two thousand twenty-two minutes.
It's been updated to provide appropriation and expenditure data for two thousand nineteen, twenty, and twenty-one.
Updated on the OneDrive?
It's updated on the OneDrive as well. Under.
So is there a reason why the animal inspector and dog officer are listed under our budget? I don't see any dollar amounts there, but.
Oh, you have it, or you don't have the?
I just went into the OneDrive.
Yeah, that's which one did you go to? Go to financial, then go to budget twenty-three.
So it's not in our selectmen's meeting minutes?
The updated one, which I did today, probably isn't.
So this more the all-in-one you did here, Bob, with multi-years on it?
Yes. And you have a paper copy, which we printed for you tonight, but if you're looking, financial, budget twenty-three, and then budget requests subfolder, it's there. There it is.
Put the. Back to the start, the salary book back last year.
Yeah, you've got, can you, did you get it up? Yeah, you got the data for the last few years, so you can compare.
And then the Selectman Administrative Assistant, the more health coordinator is, you know, along with the five percent of the or the towns.
Yes.
What's gasoline, gasoline and gasoline pump maintenance, is that over?
The pump has, it has rather sophisticated software.
But is that what's over at D P W?
Yes.
Talking about gasoline, we talked about that, and Mark says that the, the, the black end of price isn't going to be until October, and the guy at the regional handle that said it's best to just wait. You don't know, you don't, you know, we should, I mean, we seem to be okay now.
If you watch the futures prices, they, they're all up and down right now, I think it'd be, I think it'd be dumb to lock in right now, but.
Before you lock in, and then of course, we can all speed adjust, if they need more money, we can throw it in.
Yeah, but if we lock in now, there's no chance of paying lower rate.
Yeah, but you're gonna lock in at a bulk rate, and yeah, because you're going, you're going to the worst, even if you lock in, you're still locking them, like buying assault, et cetera.
So, but the amount we have in there is fifty thousand, we should leave it at that.
And what covers that, I mean, as far as the gas, what are, what are we responsible for, for that, who's, who's using that gas, is that the town trucks?
Yeah.
D P W?
Everything.
And, and just recently, Mark's and Rick, a little bit today.
Okay.
One of the things that we incidentally didn't have a data for is the expenditure for the website. It looked, I mean, when, when Pam and I were putting this in and looking at it, it looked as though website expenses were either paid outside this budget, or might have been included in the info tech line item.
Really? When we paid Civic Plus, it wasn't under this line?
No.
Under info, but no, there's no website. So I think we may have been wrong.
Well, it wasn't. Was there a website line item in the past? No. So it's been, so you created a line item, so you're creating a line item for website?
I did, I did not create it, but it looked like it, it does exist, I didn't create it.
There was one there.
And, and.
But I mean, it said zero, so it wasn't actually there. But not, yeah, so we're making.
So we can just, we can take that. We can take that out, or was it paid, was it paid from some other budget?
Yeah.
So we have an appropriation for FY twenty-two.
Right.
Yeah.
What did you run it, what did that run it?
Yeah.
So what's the question? If we didn't last year, what's the question about this year?
Not a problem this year or last year, but prior years, we couldn't find in, in the, in the printouts that Cliff provides, we could not find an ex, an expense line for the website. And we wondered if that might have been included in the past under info tech.
Well, possibly, but I think Handen, the Handen dot gov site only came into being in nineteen, so.
No, no, no.
We've been Handen.org up until that point.
No, 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 sorry.
Civic Plus website, right?
Civic Plus versus, you're talking about the domain, domain.
Yeah.
Okay, two separate things. Our webpage, we pay for, that's different than the domain, which now we no longer have to pay for.
Why don't you have to pay for the domain?
Because the government said you don't have to anymore.
You don't pay the dot gov domain, we had to pay four hundred before.
Yes, we did, and I got a notice this year, this past year, to renew, and I went through the process and the signal church. I know.
Only thing I see on expenses for, I know John Plaster had requested additional money for the water district because of the expanded operation, I don't see that changing here.
Which page?
Page four, water district operations, water district testing.
I know what we talked about, did we actually get a hard number though?
Yeah, yeah, Johnson submitted it.
I, I don't have that. Another issue, by the way, you'll see on the same page is public health nurse.
Or did he submit the Jane?
That cost is being covered for three years, so whether to leave the line item there, but maybe defund it. Or.
Defund it, leave the line over there, but defund it if it's gonna be paid for, like, because that's like the, the, our assessment on dispatch.
Right.
You know, you know, just defund it, and we have to pay in three years.
What was that for, public health?
Public health.
In other words, the shared health arrangement is going to cover that cost.
We can take that out.
Yeah.
Tell your buddy, you can take that out. The water, what is with the water district, the water district, shouldn't the water district like have its own little thing set on this selectman, like, you know, the transfer station, that's a, that's a, because the legislation said the sole purpose of the water district is for the landfill. And, you know, provide clean water for the landfill.
Technically, it's its own P W S, so it's registered as a, on public.
Yeah, so I mean, so C S is all commissions, so just have like a separate.
Well, we can always vote to create enterprise funding, we funding it all the time since it doesn't generate money.
Yeah, no, but I don't need an enterprise fund, I mean, a separate, like, conservation.
It's a budget.
You know, I mean, separate, with transfer, the testing and the transfer station, with that, because that's.
Yeah, it's under, involved in that, sure, yeah.
No, I mean, that's, that's just an account. Operations, I mean, with Bob taking over from Mike Frammer, has the cost gone up?
Yeah, we, we, it always exceeds the budget. So we just got updated quotes from Bob, too, and his testing is going up because he's gonna be testing different things, more buildings, instead of charging the town director for a town hall, he's now charging the district, so it's just getting shifted around.
Well, to me, so now we don't, we have different P W S, you know, the town hall P W S, which was a charge.
Right.
But that's gonna go against the district, where'd that charge come out of before, was it town hall operations?
Probably, I'm assuming it was.
It's not operations, that each other's.
So the water district, are we adding something?
Yeah, what did you recommend, Bob, John, do you remember off the end?
So ten thousand.
Ten and three.
So three thousand for.
Now, you think that's sufficient from what we were talking about last week? Yeah.
Well, you also had asked about some equipment upgrade, that we were going to hopefully charge against the project, right?
Yeah, and we're still waiting on that quote from Bob, as of last week, he was wanting to get it to us this week.
They felt that the generator didn't need to be replaced. And someone was in here, surveyed the generator.
And it'd be forty and fifty, waiting for new one anyhow, so.
But he did say that the, the pumps need to be cleaned and serviced because they're bleeding back a little bit. So we need that physical quote from him, so we can proceed with, you know, the ARPA funds for it.
Watching well, that worked well.
Is the air thing going away gradually?
Yes. I've, I've noticed that it has receded, that we had a lot of air initially, but now running water in the, in, in the town hall doesn't produce the kind of foaminess and.
You were still getting some complaints, so weren't you?
So what should the accurate numbers be?
Ten for operations.
Ten?
For testing.
And three.
All right, let's go back over to back to page one, unemployment compensation. Want to move that ten thousand in, we don't have any claims.
Basically, it's a corruption, if you had a real thing, it'd be exceeding.
Yeah, I have another, I have two mother, two other questions. We have usually, the Selectman's budget usually has five separate spreadsheets. I put them all into one, put all, put them in as tabs into one spreadsheet, but I did not include the transfer station. Usually, that's Selectman Budget Number Five, should that tab be included? And secondly, with the dog officer or the animal control officer, should that be a tab on the police department budget or a separate budget?
Speaking to the transfer station, because it's an enterprise fund, I think it should be kept on its own sheet.
A separate budget?
Yes.
Yeah.
Because you have retained earnings every year, things like that, you're always tracking.
But the dog officer's under the police chief, so I think you got an argument there.
That's a bit of a turf war.
Well, isn't, under their communities, a dog officer fall under the police jurisdiction?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Oh, I know, but I mean.
I don't really see it as a turf war.
I see, no, no, but Jeff's on, I think that's Jeff on the thing, and Jeff will speak to it, you know, it's always been back and forth. It's the smallest part of the budget, but it's been, who wants it, whichever, and that's, and Jeff has really been running it for quite a while, just never had a problem with it. And I don't think Scotty really has a problem with it either.
No, when I talk with the chief, he seems to be, be satisfied with the way it works now, with, with the dog officer being under his authority.
So her current chief is okay with it?
His protection makes sense. All right.
So, so just to be clear, we will make that a tab in the police department budget, the transfer station will remain independent, and the water, water district budget should be independent or continue.
I think it should be independent and put the transfer station testing in there, too, because that's what it's all about, the testing, right?
No, testing is, well, it doesn't get paid on the transfer enterprise fund.
Yeah, but I mean, it should go in the water commission budget.
Right, but the testing is because of the water district concerns in the past, that's why we have the water district.
Yeah, I mean, it's a, it's a straight reason, appropriate, but we both have contract to fabric, and we're stuck in the name of consent. So I think we're stuck with the testing, because we signed a contract with the testing, not the district committee. We're liable for, as far as the consent. Right, right, yeah. Right.
Property and liability. One hundred and fifty thousand, I want.
Brooke.
I don't know which way to go with this.
Well, we have more vehicles, that's one thing.
What else, what's their, what do they say?
They got nervous when I said, oh, the chair wants to shut around, and I did ask the, the last run report, which, did you see it?
I did, that's from, I think, it goes back to two thousand seventeen.
I will say, well, let me just say one thing, we have, there's part of that there that we really can't comment on publicly. But I had a conversation with Bob about that, and I really think some of the numbers in there, I questioned why they're paying them out. And I think, Don, you can have a conversation with Bob on the same thing, and I would like an answer from Barry, like, why that expense is under our thing when I don't have counsel, I don't think we're liable for it, based on what we've seen so far, from our attorney. Right. So, why'd they pay it out? Right.
They, they, they just paid attorney, that's the attorney.
No, it's not the attorney, that's paid out to the principal in the action.
No.
Yes, you see the name on it, look at every other thing, how it's paid this person for a car accident, it paid.
Do we get clarification on that?
Well, I.
I spoke to the attorneys, that is not their money.
You spoke with Carol, Carol's different than, than Barry Insurance.
Why are they involved, we have, we've retained counsel in this matter.
No, they pay the counsel, Barry Insurance pays the counsel.
They have not built anywhere near that.
Does that anybody else working on it?
No. So I would like to know from Barry where they're writing those checks.
I will find out, I have a question.
Not to get too deep into it, but, all right, Bob, I'm sure can research that. I don't think we should get blamed for something, you know.
I can't imagine.
Yeah, so.
If it's not resolved.
Right.
All these benefits is one of that.
That seems, and I, I think I mentioned in email, that seems low, if we're seeing an increase in the S V H R T of six to seven percent.
Well, Dick's, Dick says our next, it's gonna be twenty-eight thousand eight hundred dollars a month. Times twelve is three hundred and forty-five thousand, that's.
That's my point.
Three hundred and forty-five thousand six hundred.
Right.
However, however, we are seeing a decrease in our assessment from the Hampton County Regional Retirement Board.
That's a different. Also, the fact that it picks up sixty percent, it also adds X number of dollars more monthly, so.
Yeah, he, he says it adds five thousand bucks a month, so. He said in an email, and it was two hundred, it was twenty-eight thousand eight hundred dollars a month would be our.
And that's with our current rule, who's to say?
No, no, that's with the new one.
No, I know.
Oh, no, sorry.
Who's to say with our stepping up to seventy percent or whatever, more people are gonna join, so.
Right.
We gotta fix that.
So, so we should change the, the label on that from employee benefits to health insurance?
No, that is health insurance.
That's what I thought.
It's also.
It is. But it doesn't include.
Don's thinking it should be three forty-four, not three fourteen.
It's an omnibus account.
Employee benefits is, is the health insurance.
Right.
The retirement is, is a separate.
Separate, yeah, separates. Plus, it's around six hundred.
Six hundred and forty.
That's not even under our budget, it's just a charge, that's something different, you know, so we gotta fix that.
And we got one, Selectman legalizing Matthew Zachario.
On the temporary help, I know we kept it at twelve, what have we expended this year, have we actually used any temporary help?
I don't know.
I.
I think Sue, Sue's thinking.
I think this year, we, we've spent less than twelve hundred dollars.
What is school building repair, is that considered this building, school building?
No, that's our portion, anything under, and it's changed.
It's twenty-five thousand.
Twenty-five thousand, we pay a portion of.
Yep.
Like, I agree here, when they did the, there was a little work underneath the tile of some pipe going out, it seemed better.
Oh, yeah. And then town events, John, back to your topic from two meetings ago, planning for a big party?
Thanks, I don't know what the name is, assessment.
Is that where we would wanna put that?
No, because of course, that, that would be stripped every year, this is manual appropriation, so you wouldn't actually save any of them. This would be where you would appropriate, if go to Jane's plan for the townwide party, should be a place to put that money in.
Temporary help, we've spent one thousand four hundred and fifty-five dollars and nineteen cents.
Right. I thought Suzie was saying under Cliff's budget, not temporary help.
Well, what is, click that for a budget, does he have a decent?
They wanna cut that?
No, I mean, if you need somebody, it's.
Two thousand, about two thousand?
Yeah.
Two thousand.
The two thousand.
Bring it down to two thousand, or cut it to two thousand?
No, take it back to ten.
Bring down to ten?
Yeah.
Make that ten.
So I'll do it right, right here as we speak.
Did you wanna change the employee benefits, or you wanna wait to hear from Dick on that?
Well, I think we should prep the advisory, but there's.
He'll be there tonight, so I'm sure he'll have some cost if we want to make.
Well, those numbers came from the treasurer today, so.
Down to three fourteen, that looks like just a carryover. He said, he already told you twenty-eight, you know, just by doing the math.
He sent an email, say a twenty-eight.
Right, so.
So unless that's changed, I mean.
I mean, he called it thirty, and twelve years, three sixty, right there, and that doesn't allow sick time buyback or anything like that, which is the other part.
I think we could add more there, but it's still very much unpredictable and dependent upon.
Yeah, yes. I don't think you go wrong by calling it three fifty and saying it's something you can touch up in the fall, if you needed another tenant, you know, free cash. But three fifty is certainly a lot more realistic than the three fourteen.
So we'll go to three fifty.
Totally money.
Thank you, Senator Dirksen.
Where are we now?
What is mapping? G I S?
Yes.
Yeah.
Back on two.
We got a quote on that G I S for all some of that.
We've, we've been paying the same, and I don't even think, I think that's a total cost, I don't think we, I think we pay a thousand.
Will go to the assessors or go to us typically?
Both, we share it, we share the.
I didn't know who got it, what was it?
Kelly gets it, I think.
The veterans benefits, is that what Rich was talking about last week, where we pay it out and we get reimbursed?
Yeah, you get, you get reimbursed retroactively, so. Here for the expenditures this year.
Yeah, it's one of those things, like, you know, you say it's, oh my gosh, look at the expenses, but you never know, you know.
Right. That's likely to go up, because I think we have a more aggressive V B O. V S O.
Is our street lighting budget gonna change with the addition of the dozen lights?
Well, that's why we bumped it up to the twenty-five, I mean, obviously, the L E D does provide something, but who knows, Bob and I both look at the M M A and see what, you know, oh my gosh, Ever Source would like a twenty-five percent increase, and they're happy to negotiate down to twelve, and they're laughing on the way back, because they only want eight. Is it right? It's close. With, with the power purchase agreement, it's tough to track, it really is, I think Pam has mentioned before, it's an arcane science to figure out where money goes.
I don't know, maybe two people understand it all.
Right.
And we are gonna get numbers on the additional street lights.
Oh, the whole numbers, yeah.
Well, whole numbers, but increased cost of whatever we.
We emailed that before, we had the cost number before, she's just in a form.
She needs to know the size of the lights on each, everything you wanna have.
Office equipment acquisition. All right. Twenty twenty-one, we spent how much? Twenty twenty-one, we spent two thousand, we spent two thousand eighty-six dollars. This year, we haven't spent anything.
Well, I think that's because you have to, I want to say blame or congratulate the guy at the end of the table. Because I think he slid a lot of those expenses off the, for acquisition, all the stuff you see in front of him, you know, so.
Yeah, yeah.
Good job, Bob.
Thought that was, we'll take a tip. Federal government forced us to do it, we didn't want to, but.
Yeah.
Right there for our grandchildren, okay. So what do you wanna do? I think the same.
Yeah. I mean, look at expenditures back in twenty twenty.
It was the.
Yeah, we're spending out.
What do we buy with it?
Well, now you're, you're chairs, I mean, you look to, we're fortunate, all the panel we got, second, we're paying for my chair plans, but that would have been part of this.
Yeah. Info tech, that, that's.
That's more the computer, that's also being around trades, around, yeah.
Just so you're aware, there's some reason to be concerned that we may have to conduct a single audit required by the federal government whenever federal funds exceed seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. We're, we're getting ARPA, we had CARES this past year, we're bumping right up against it.
Is that over three years or a single year?
Single year, so I talked to the town accountant today about that, and he's gonna try and add the numbers together, but we're, we're gonna be very close. If we have to do a single audit, it's gonna be significantly more expensive.
In a calendar year or in a fiscal year?
It would be in a fiscal year.
I mean, the calendar would have been nice, because that was all expended pretty much up in.
What?
Well.
John, you read about.
And what?
No.
Tom's game. Yes.
Expenses. What do we got here, though? I'm on page three.
All right.
We get that, right, the solar made utilities, right, and street lighting, gasoline pump. Energy management, traffic control.
I would say traffic control, one thing, although we're going to have some more smaller projects now with the increase in possible increase in chapter ninety-one. We need a little, and plus the fact that our number went up while we're paying the guys for patrol, these are on town projects. It might not be a bad idea, put a little more in there. We know we're going to have more projects and it's going to cost us more.
So traffic control, that's it.
If it's a small.
The town, if the town's doing it, we have to have a.
Not also for election coverage or is that coming out of Eva's budget for elections? For officer.
She has.
I'd say it might be an idea to go. Wouldn't even say eighteen months if that number. If we're going to get the extra money for the chapter ninety of setup, we're going to have more small projects to be doing.
That looks good, too.
Right.
The extra hundred million.
Forward money and the bridge money, again, we need more.
So put that, make it eighteen.
Traffic control.
Say that again.
Traffic control.
How much?
Eighteen. Did we say we're going to wipe out the public health next?
Yeah.
Take that out. Not in this budget.
We're going to go to eighteen, did you say? Traffic control.
Public health, there's gone. Mostly advisors, oh my gosh, some other advisors.
What's it look like? What's our total? Seventy bazillion?
Do we have an actual total from sheet to sheet?
No. Tell you what I can do. I can do one. Eight oh five, eight point five.
I think at least there's sixty thousand. I guess there's the, uh, the property and the building and the insurance is pretty much the thick things right there.
Twenty-five thousand in the property and insurance.
Forty-five thousand. Now we got the savings and the others to offset.
We're going to make sure those numbers are right.
It is, I mean, look at, go back to twenty-one and you see the expenditure, you know, it actually was almost eight percent less than appropriated money. There's that return right there, it's also free cash. It's this. We're going to catch anything up before we go down there with sixteen fifteen, we've got ten minutes, forty-one.
Do you want me to, uh, we can reprint this before we go down?
Yeah, yeah, reprint that. We're going to do, uh.
Let me bring up the video conference in fact. The reason I put that on there was because we got a situation where we have other boards, we want to have Zoom meetings. We have on our board here, Bob was multitasking and it doesn't help him with us if he has to run the Zoom at the same time. Is there an opportunity for a senior tax workout person who would like to be a Zoom operator? We have temp help money, we just discovered that, we have plenty of temp help money, temp help money, would somebody like to do it? And I think if we have somebody like that, we know there are boards that are eager to do it, parks, planning, but their clerk can't do both. You can't run the Zoom meeting and bring the notes to the chair and things like that. We're not talking huge money.
I'm thinking senior tax person maybe wouldn't want to be out for the number of meetings that.
Hmm, I mean, you could have multiple ones, but I think really we have to advertise and get somebody here for this. I mean, it's unfair to Bob to ask him to do both things, you know, he's running a thing and then, what's your question? It's just.
And we've got the money in temporary help, and even a couple of high school kids. You should split the, can split the.
Will we be able to find somebody to fill that void?
That's the problem.
Right.
Which, that's what I'm saying, let's advertise, promote the job description and advertise. You watch other towns and their meetings, their clerical people are not running the Zoom meeting.
No.
That allows them to focus on back to the board, here's your information. And that will help, I think, other boards step up and do and get on Zoom as well. Something Bob could prep up a little job description, put it out there. I think you'll find people.
Yeah, we had talked about that. I, I think it's a good idea.
No, that's for sale, it won't cost us anything because we have the money in temp help. Okay. That was, that's why I asked that.
Yeah, that sounds like a good idea.
Well, I do, uh. Official meets, meeting site posting, you ready for that?
Yeah, not really much to it, but. Um, I saw in Bob's thing, he was waiting for a response from our attorney to see about legally changing our official meeting posting, but most people use the website. Should we consider using the website as our official posting location? Get everybody on board, they'll save everybody a headache from trying to scramble to the board outside. Would we have to still send it to Eva for her approval?
Yes, oh, you still have to do that.
I got the regulation, printed out the regulation, so. It says the chief executive officer, which is the selectman, can vote to have municipal websites official posting site. If you do that, uh, then you have to put instructions outdoors, how to use it, where to find it, we do that. You could have two posting sites, you could have the website and you could have both of them.
I think we have to do the work for people.
I think we should still do the board for sure, but.
And then once adopted as the official notice of posting, the website shall host the official legal proceedings of all the public advisors moving to the spell.
Everybody's got to get on board.
And then notices must continue to be filed with the municipal clerk or any other person that's designated. And decision that more than one, the copies of notices shall also be accessible to public municipal clerk. She has that book that she uses.
So, yeah, we emailed her.
I, I think if we wanted to do that, we should vote with a, a a period of time, say we're starting July first or something, and then I'll give everyone time to know about it, learn it, we can set it up and do it and such.
July first will make the fiscal year start?
Yeah.
It gets back to, again, Bob, is every department, you could bring the devil to the staff meeting, is every department trained in how to put their information on the website? Getting the agendas up, we know certain boards don't, but we can train them to that.
They're not. Uh, I'm volunteering nearly every meeting I have with them now to help out if they want to do it. I think, you know, the article that we talked about was wrong. Um, what I, what I wanted to get across was that the Conservation Commission is the first municipal board that is doing it all themselves, doing the posting, doing the Zoom themselves, uh, uh, recording the Zoom meeting, posting the Zoom meeting, uh, and so across the board, they're, they're getting it done, and I, I, I'm offering to do that with other boards and committees. I do think if we were to be able to get someone from the outside uh, who would learn how to use it, that would probably increase the use of Zoom and the recording of meetings by other key municipal boards. Particularly, I think, planning does it, but they don't do it every meeting. Certainly the zoning board, I think, w- would be in that category. And advisory committee, it seems to me that, you know, across the board, we can get the key committees to do it. They probably aren't going to be able to do it, there'll be some resistance unless there's help, not just in training, but also help in getting it done.
Well, that's what I'm saying, the Zoom operator, you look at our, our playlist, you know, you have conservation with one meeting, park rep, one meeting, advisory, four meetings, planning board, seventeen meetings. Capital improvement, you know, pretty ad hoc board, has nine.
Yeah.
You know, they're number three on the.
Yeah.
Hit rate. We're number one, Don, don't worry about that.
I just want to get the.
Well, they're, they're close. I think they're close to doing it. Uh, actually, they're close to doing it through the chair.
Which one?
Capital, capital planning.
They are, but I mean, this gets back into, I think, as Craig and I have both been the Zoom operator of planning, we certainly understand, you can't need a clerk and run that Zoom meeting.
No, it's hard to.
So that's back to the official, we're going to go, you're going to submit a job description, but we're talking about the official posting.
Yeah.
Right, is going to be the website.
Also training as well for that, also training, and we'll have a time certain July.
We have to vote on that, though, right?
Yes.
So, I'd like to make a motion for the town of Hampton to adopt the town of Hampton website as the official meeting posting spot for all boards effective July first twenty twenty-two. We will utilize the board in the background.
Second.
Good.
Time we got now, six twelve.
Can we touch on six oh one real quick?
Sure.
Because we, easily. So Water Commission met last week and we were able to get calliform reports and a CCR report, the Consumer Confidence Report from the previous year. Um, we can supply that to the resident of six oh one who's questioning, looking for that info. We feel though, you know, the, the district commissioners of the water district feel that if the homeowner's looking for anything outside of what the district provides, that they would be responsible for sourcing and funding that type of testing.
Is this a report you provide to everybody in the district, automatically or only on request?
Um, it's performed yearly per DP standards, it's available to anybody, but John and I have discussed continuing to give it out or starting to give it out to every resident that's on the district.
I think one of the best, especially when you have municipal buildings that are, we can have a posting if anybody has a question here, whichever is.
And, you know, and just for the record, Skinnick Island Water District is a registered public water supply system, it's regulated by the the EP, I don't know the patch and all that stuff, so it's been providing good quality water since its inception.
And he's working? Are we, are these working?
Yes.
Okay, I'll make a motion to, uh, leave this, if you want.
I just want to tell anyone who's on Zoom, we're going to, uh, recess from here and go to the advisory committee and discuss the fire department budget and the selective budget. Then we turn back here, open session, we have a couple of items remaining, and then we'll go to executive session for collective bar. We're going to reassess the budget up there, baby. You can print out the budget for it.
Try and get the budget printed.
I'm going to get, I'll get downstairs and print this, print the new ones.
But we haven't paid that fifty-seven, so why is our experience then being honest to something, and I think bottom ground, but it has the compensation, we have a very strong case.
Okay.
So.
They threw it out and didn't see it. They threw it out, and any, any organization in the state is partial to the employees in this area. They throw it out, you know, the. See, if you do the fire.
That's scary. That's. That's.
Yeah.
Let's move around to the downstairs. Watch them, they're probably watching this. Where's the camera? On the table. It's kind of freaky.
Yeah it is.
It follows me.
Yeah.
You see that?
Yeah.
Or maybe it hears your voice and goes to the voice. You were walking, I stood still. Well, I was also talking. Well. They're signing. Yeah, I wanted the idea that Mark's talking. Supposed to be talking to them.
No, I think that's, that's the, it's.
Or send you to about those workshops. They're gonna fight.
Ben by the executive.
Bring college.
I mean, I'll make a phone call tomorrow.
Not blocking the best person can come back to the board.
All right, are we back recording?
We are recording.
Let's see. Let's run through the, I guess we're going to skip the alpha projects again, okay?
Okay.
All right, and we'll do the selectmen's reports.
I think to report, we have an upcoming housing meeting that we're going to be able to come back with the list for the CPA projects.
I got a few things, yeah. Over the weekend, the library had a 3D printer delivered, set up, installed. They're in the process now of setting up some youth programming, revolve around learning the skill of 3D printing modeling technology. Be kind of cool for the kids to take in. We went over the water concerns, strategic planning met last week, we're in the process of reviewing 813 community surveys. We're still working towards finalizing the vision and mission statements. We have another meeting again this week on Wednesday. And then last week, I met with the radio communications people, Mark, police chief, Marcus Communications. Just to go over some stuff. Looks like everything's up and running for the police department. They got 95% coverage in town, which is the industry standard, very minimal dead spots. The fire department was still concerned about some radio coverage outside of town lines, neutral aid, such. Different things were talked about, you know, we talked about the cell tower lease that we're paying $2,000 a month. You know, would it be beneficial to revisit the black tower? Use some Arpa money, use Pine Valley Transit, maybe they would like to donate some of that. Save us that $2,000 a month lease if we could fix this up using Arpa money. It was just a topic brought up.
Good. Back to that, also Tony Gentile is still working again, the cameras updated here at the town hall as well, bit of a supply issue, big surprise.
Yeah, and he's also going to work on getting marker radio so he can have communications with the police and fire.
Tomorrow night, there's a meeting of the conservation commission, and a couple of items on their agenda, I mean Thursday night. All right, Wednesday, 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 sorry. Conservation Commission, they got a couple of items on their agenda, one is the first delineation for the solar project on Glendale Road. And also Howlett Hill Road, apparently there's some damage to the berm, the silt is going down into some wetlands. But as we know, we've abandoned that maintenance, so.
I thought also, Mark, aren't you trying to get on their agenda so he can discuss emergency repair, or are you working that out with Bonnie?
The bridge.
So I submitted. Yeah. So, and then I was told that.
This is more the health thing than that. Yes. I could vote to authorize a separate power permit for Parker portals from Grand.
I thought you said.
They're going that revolving.
Entertained a motion to go into executive session to discuss strategy with respect to collective.
Wait a minute, Bob, do you get it?
Oh, yeah, excuse me.
Okay, I had another contact from the individual that works with National Grid to install EV charging stations. The last time I brought this up.
You gotta recuse yourself, Bob, come on.
I've said I don't need it and I won't use it, but the last time I brought it up with the town employees, there were, there were objections that all the parking spaces here are needed. And that putting in two charging stations with four ports would take up parking, and there was opposition to it. After this most recent contact, he suggested that we do it at the police station or the senior center. Well, I'm sure the police don't want it, but I did talk to the senior center director and she welcomes it, so. There's a thought that these things, first of all, they're federally funded now too, I mean, it's, it's, it's free. It would take some time because I guess there's a certain backlog. Not sure the equipment is easily obtained, but he was knocking on the door.
When you say free, I remember the last time we talked about it, there would have been a little bit of a charge to the town. Is this completely free now?
Well, the state has additional funds, as long as we do a level two and not a level three. Level three, the so-called DC chargers, they cost upwards of $80,000 to $100,000. The level twos are under 50, the state will fund you up to 50. So, anyway, that's just another.
I would say that's a great place to have it, I know fire worship people are preuses, and I'm sure the seniors.
I am seeing more and more.
Will they fund just one or two?
They will fund two. So you'd have two stations with four ports.
Yeah, they're going to fund it, and Becky's got spots for it.
I did another negotiation with the highway union on March 1st, I thought we were done. But the representative came to me, I guess. Well, not only today, but also Wednesday, and said, no, we want to meet with the selectmen, so. I took it off the executive session and Pam put it back on for that reason. I think we're pretty much ready to go. I do need a project for the state budget earmark that Senator Lesser is interested in. He, his staff contacted us and said, tell us what you need. So I know Wilbraham has already submitted their project. We need to focus on something that we want in the state budget as an earmark, and I will communicate that to the senator's staff, and off we go.
A new fire station.
A new fire, that, that might be a bridge too far, but I was, I was thinking of. I, I was, I was thinking of bridges and culverts.
Was this one fire truck?
Yeah, what, yeah.
Well, I suggested the library windows. And then there's a couple of things on the Aaron Osborne list of capital improvements for green metals, like an ADA play area and new locks for the doors for $75,000 or something like that, maybe one of those things.
Okay, the school department's also looking for new network switches, too.
Real surprised that this list of the mag locks, because they had done such an upgrade program around the school district adding mag locks to every school. Really? This is a technology thing. Maybe their remote access or?
Their network switches are 10 years old.
The lock changes the doors, because Hannah calls, Gina was really pushing them at every building.
Well, okay, I know where we need to go, so I'll follow up. I did have a contact from an attorney who specializes in renewal of cable TV contracts, and I will get you copies of his proposal for maybe a discussion next time.
Did he source you?
Pardon?
Did he reach out to you?
He reached out to me.
Because our charter contract in town is running up next year?
Uh, it, I think it's two years, but you start early, and so he reached out to me because this is the only work that he does. He keeps track of what the, what contracts are expiring. I didn't hire him in Norfolk, but he did, he did the contract when I was there in Norfolk. I did hire him in Ipswich, and he did the contract, did very good work. And, you know, he just reached out and said, where are you? He knew, and he said, can I send you a proposal? So I'll, I'll share it with it. FEMA MEMA COVID reimbursements, new phone system is going to be installed, but there's been a delay because some parts are needed. Where are we with the records access officer? We had a proposal from our town clerk, and I noticed that Don also had some other ideas there from Pelham.
Well, again, it's a. We need both to discuss.
Let's have Eva play.
All right, okay, we'll put her on the next agenda. The application for the Community Compact Fiber Optic Grant Program starts tomorrow. Oftentimes, or it's usual customary now that the state encourages collaboration. And so you have a stronger application if you put in an application with another community. I card, I hired, I called the Wilbraham administrator and said, what do you think? Where are you? And he said if his selectmen approve, and tonight, I guess they're going to discuss it, that we would, we would submit a joint application for $500,000, and we would share it equally, so.
Fifty fifty?
Yes. And if they don't approve, the maximum that we can get is 250,000. I'm going to put an application in this week to take care of the preliminary work that's required. In, in a discussion I had with.
Brian? Hmm? Was it Brian?
Brian, yeah, at, at Whip City Fiber. They're going to, it's going to require about $150,000 for the work that Verizon and Grid, National Grid will do. And it will cost us probably 50 for Whip City Fiber to be part of that effort, and basically to be our representative. Because you have to go pole to pole, and the company has to decide which ones are, are in a good enough condition to hang one more wire, I think it's four feet from, from the, the next wire, and which ones aren't and have to be replaced. And what Whip City Fiber said that we are on your side, and we'll see to it that an old wooden pole that shouldn't have been replaced 20 years ago isn't replaced at your expense. So that's basically where things are. So applying for $250,000 to get that process underway, I think, is, is the next step for us if we do it with Wilbraham.
Higher likelihood of getting it. If we do it with Wilbraham, there's a higher likelihood of getting it.
Yes, I mean, it, you know, the, this is an era. The Baker administration is about shared services at the municipal level. And that's why we've been successful with other applications, because we're collaborating with East Long Meadow and Wilbraham and so forth. Let's see. Oh, the East Main Street Bridge, the preliminary report, which I got on the telephone, said that the East Main Street Bridge design will be completed very soon, that it's going to cost 2 million, and that the length of the bridge is going to have to be 30 feet, not 20 feet. That makes it ineligible for the small bridge program.
Right, this is Laughing Brook Bridge or the other bridge by Don's house? Mark?
That would be the one closest to Laughing Brook.
Yes, I was, so the East, East, East Brook Bridge, or sometimes called the East Main Street Bridge.
One by.
So a year or so ago, we talked about this, the bridge needed work, but the biggest problem was, I'd say cosmetic, the concrete was spalling, but it wasn't that bad. This group came to us and was pushing, hey, we can do this upgrade for you, great. Now, the bridge is in danger of failing?
No, 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 no. They're going to replace the culvert.
Yeah.
In order to have the amount of room for the culvert.
Yeah.
The bridge has to be longer.
Okay, so they created this problem because they created this problem. I'm just, where do, how do we get to this one? All we have was a bridge that the concrete was chipping away at the top.
It's a bridge from the 1930s and.
Got that.
Yeah.
I go back to the flooding, when I was there for the 2005 flooding, the worst flooding was here. We didn't have that really bad a problem at Laughing Brook. Why don't we go back to some of your lesson, looking for things and asking them to help us with the money for this bridge, if it's over?
Can do that, yeah.
And really go back into the design thing about why we have to go to a 30-foot bridge when we've had this 20-foot span and it's been fine. Maybe a better design doesn't get it for 30.
So it doesn't, it doesn't qualify for the small bridge program?
Because.
Small or more.
It's not small enough.
Is there a?
In or, in order to accommodate, in order to accommodate another culvert.
Yeah, I understand.
The bridge has to be lengthy.
So is our culvert out of spec now to standards, is that why?
No, no, I mean, nothing will happen if we do nothing. If we have a more severe weather, there could be some flooding, but, you know, this is not a dire situation. But they did identify in that municipal vulnerability project, they did, did identify that particular area as a place where we're vulnerable for more flooding. And we, we talked about the culvert, which is in reasonably good condition, by the way. It just won't carry, won't carry the water that's necessary sometimes. They're also planning upstream measures to absorb some of the, the water before it comes down and empties into the Scantic River. So, you know, it's a situation where if you want to improve the culvert, you've got to scoop out more of the, more of the land around the bridge, and that means the bridge has to be longer. And because of that, it doesn't meet the standard for the new, new the small bridge program. Anyway, what I was told is that this would be submitted to the DOT for funding. And, you know, I guess we have nothing to lose there, but that's a possibility. And the other thing is, I guess we could, we could short circuit this process by saying, let's, let's get a, let's get an earmark. And I think we could probably make a reasonably good case. So.
Can we make a $2 million case? Well, money.
Sorry, I think it's going to do it. See what happens.
Yeah.
They come with the money, then in five years or 10 years from now, they'll do it.
The firm that did, that's doing.
Said our consultants, they're in the business of making money.
Well, making money, yeah. Although they don't, they don't do the project. They're designing the project, they won't do it, you know, it's not designed, built, it's just designed.
Who, who is their contractor though?
Tire salesman, hey, did you know we have a bad tire back there? Four new ones. Little markup reference there, sorry, Greg.
Got the upset.
Okay, you got the upset, yeah, so.
That's my report.
Really, huh?
Yep.
I know, I'm going to go back to one of my favorite topics quickly before we crosswalk. I have a suggestion. We've got a lot going on, I would suggest, why don't we kick the crosswalk, which is a street type thing, over tomorrow? We've already gone through, we got the funding, all that, in terms of managing.
We have design very shortly.
Right, so let's kick that over, it's, it's the public way, it's highway department.
Makes sense.
Okay. Looking for more things to do, right, Mark? There we go.
Sign him up. He's here to negotiate.
Almost over that building, I mean, got nothing, yeah.
We put it into his contract.
Clearly, I have a motion to go, go executive discuss, discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining with the superintendent of the highway department and the highway union. And an open meeting will have a definite effect on the bargaining position of the public body. And we will, we will not return to open session.
Make a motion to go into executive session for the purposes as specified by the chair, without a return to open session.
Second.
Down, down, what I.
Try to reverse that.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Good. Watch out for that warm weather on Friday.
Woo.